Good evening, everyone. There being a quorum present of 35 people and noting that the warrant has been properly served, this annual meeting of the Town of Plimpton is now open. Welcome to Plimpton's 312th Annual Town Meeting. I'm your moderator, Brian Wick, 77 Winnetoxet Road. Since there is a vacancy in the office of Town Clerk, the first order of business is to elect by ballot a temporary Town Clerk. The temporary Town Clerk will be required to record all votes of the meeting. It's my understanding that Patricia Dederman, the Assistant Town Clerk, being familiar with the procedure of town meeting and having experience recording votes, has graciously offered to perform the duties of the Town Clerk tonight. Additionally, you should be aware that in elections, the person receiving the majority of votes of those present and voting is declared the winner. Accordingly, if there is only one person's name in nomination, only one vote will be required to elect the temporary Town Clerk. Do I have a nomination for Patricia Dederman to act as temporary Town Clerk for purposes of this meeting?
Mr. Moderator, I nominate Patricia Dederman. John Traynor, 62 Crescent Street, Chairman and Selectman.
Are there any additional nominations from the floor? Hearing none, nominations are closed. I'll ask for a vote to confirm the nomination. Do I hear a motion that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen cast one ballot for Patricia Dederman?
Mr. Moderator, I cast one ballot for Patricia Dederman.
I make the motion?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Christine Joy, Tendrick's Creek Road. I'll make a motion that we authorize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, John Traynor, to...
Make a vote?
Cast one vote.
Second. It's been motioned in second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I nominate Patricia Dederman.
Okay. The temporary Town Clerk will now need to be sworn in, correct? Anything else I need to do procedurally?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. They're okay. Please raise your right hand.
I, Patricia Dederman, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as temporary Town Clerk in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Plimpton and the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[186.62][186.62](APPLAUSE).
Okay, at this time, we'll ask you to please rise and we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have not done so yet, please remember to silence your cellphones. So we'll be holding two town meetings tonight. First, we'll begin with the annual town meeting, which addresses fiscal year 2020, which starts on July 1st. Then at 8:00 or shortly thereafter, we will adjourn the annual town meeting to begin a special town meeting to address funding issues for fiscal year, this past fiscal year. We'll then return to our annual meeting and the 2020 articles and budget. You should all have received a mailed copy of the town meeting warrant. If you need one, the tellers have extra copies. Tonight's meeting is being taped for broadcast by Area 58 Community Access Media. Thank you to Principal Peter Venido and special thanks to Julie Goderson for setting up the meeting. And our players for tonight, starting on my left, we have the Board of Selectmen, Mark Russo, Chair John Traynor, Christine Joy. We have Town Council Greg Corbo and our newly appointed temporary Town Clerk, Patricia Dederman. To my right, we have our Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Accountant Barbara Gomez, and then your Finance Committee Chair Nathan Sides, Lisa Hart, Marilyn Brown, Catherine Shepard, and Stephen Lewis. You were checked in tonight by our tellers Jill Palestine and Patricia Mustacaros in the back, and our police officer on duty tonight is Officer Christian Oberg. Here are the procedural rules that I will be following. We'll be following the rules that are outlined in the book Town Meeting Time. Only after being recognized by the moderator may a member address the meeting. Speakers from the floor will be allowed up to three minutes. Please be concise and bring new information or a question that hasn't previously been asked. There is no need to pile on to a particular article. Speaking to an article is all about asking questions, gaining clarity, and providing new information to help inform others. It is not about being for or against a particular issue with the most loudest or longest parade of speakers. All speakers need to approach the microphone, state your name and your street address for the record. This is especially important so we can hear you, so that it's recorded properly in the minutes and that people who watch this broadcast at home can clearly hear your comments. If you're unable to stand comfortably at the microphone, we have a wireless microphone that we can bring around to you. If you're proposing any substantial amendments, they must be submitted in writing. The Town Clerk will give you a document to submit should you wish to do that. All your comments need to be made through me as moderator, not directly at previous speakers or attendees. Please be respectful of others and their opinions. We are not going to agree with each other on every issue. Some positions people take may be emotional or passionate, but regardless of what someone may say, keep your comments respectful. For reconsideration, unless there is a compelling circumstance, I will not authorize a motion for reconsideration or rescission of a previously voted motion. In making this decision, I will weigh the significant circumstance, the importance of the article, the quantity and quality of the debate, and the margin of the earlier vote. Now, for housekeeping, if anyone is not a registered voter in Plimpton, you need to be seated in the two front rows here where the reserved seatings are. Several of our speakers tonight and town officials are not residents of Plimpton and need your permission should they wish to address the assembly. To avoid having to vote individually for these people, I will attempt to cover all these names at once. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that will allow the following people to participate tonight when and if appropriate. Town Administrator Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Council Greg Corbo, Town Accountant Barbara Gomez, Highway Surveyor Scott Ripley, Assistant Town Assessor Wendy Jones, Police Chief Patrick Dillon, Veteran Agent Roxanne Whitbeck, Council on Aging Director Joy Marble, Denit Elementary School Principal Peter Venido, Silver Lake Regional School District Superintendent Joy Blackwood, Assistant Superintendent Jill Pearl, Business Manager Christine Healy, Special Education Administrator Marie Graeble, a representative from Open Cape Angela Hurwitz, and State Representative Kathy Lanatra, who I did not see here. So at this time, I need that motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to authorize the individuals that you named to speak at town meeting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. And before we get to our first article, John Wilhamsen and Jason Frazier, from the Plimpton School Committee, would like to say a few words.
Yes, good evening, everyone. John Wilhamsen, 255 Main Street, and I'm the Chair of the Plimpton School Committee. About a month ago or so, we got some news that our very esteemed Superintendent Joy Blackwood will be retiring in January, and while we refuse to accept this news, she still is going to do it anyways. So we wanted to just extend as part of the school committee and as a community our great thanks to her for all of the work that she has done for Silver Lake and particularly for the Denit, and that while we will miss her very much, we do wish her a very happy retirement.[575.66][575.66](APPLAUSE).
Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street. I am the Vice Chair of the Plimpton Elementary School Committee and the Chairman of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. I come before you tonight to recognize Chief Dillon for all of his work in providing advice, time, effort, to make sure the students of our town and the three communities are safe at all times when they're in our buildings, and I wish him well with his retirement as well. So thank you, Chief Dillon, for all you've done for us.[621.16][621.16](APPLAUSE).
This is to hear reports of town officers and act accordingly. Do any town officers wish to make a report? Hearing none, we'll move on to Article Two. Article Two is submitted by the Town Treasurer and has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
Colleen Moore, 11 Granville Baker Way. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Moved in second. Any questions on Article Two? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Three is wage and personnel wages.
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, and Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Board. I move that Article Three be approved as written in the warrant.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second, and just as a point of order, are you folks hearing that microphone okay? Because I'm not. Okay.
Let me try that again. Alan Wheelock. Oh, that's better, thank you.
How tall are you, Alan?
6'3".[733.11][733.11](LAUGHING). 10 Center Street, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel Board. Can you hear me now? I move that Article Three be approved as written in the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now for discussion. The way that we will work this procedurally is I will do each of the wages in blocks. Sorry? Oh, you need a second again?
I'll second again.
We've got two seconds, so we're good. Thank you. And this has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen. So we're looking at the column on the left side, and then on the far right where the 2020 column is, that's the wages that you are voting on. So I will read down each of the positions. If you want to discuss one of those, say "hold," and then we'll come back and discuss those. So for the firefighter's line item, deputy chief, deputy chief EMT, deputy chief advanced, deputy chief paramedic, captain EMT, captain advanced, captain paramedic, lieutenant EMT, lieutenant advanced, lieutenant paramedic, firefighter, firefighter EMT, firefighter advanced, firefighter paramedic, EMT call, hold on EMT call.
I have to go to the town. I'm wondering, I guess I dropped.
Okay, so you're not, we take that "hold" off?
Yes.
Okay. So no "hold" on EMT call. Paramedic call, full-time firefighter/paramedic, hold on that. Full-time lieutenant firefighter/paramedic, hold on that. And full-time captain/paramedic, hold on that one. So with the exception of those last three "holds," all those in favor of the others as written, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, that passes unanimously. Now for the "holds." Full-time firefighter/paramedic, please approach the mic and ask your question. And we may need to lower that, I think.
Yeah, I'm not even five feet tall, so I don't know what I just undid. Anyway, Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street. I'm wondering why we need them to be full-time? All three of them.
Chief, do you want to?
I'm also not much over five feet, apparently. Chief Silva, also 24 Winnetoxet Road, Town of Plimpton. If I heard your question correctly, was it you wondered why for full-time? Was that the question?
Yes.
Thank you. Currently, the Town of Plimpton has a full-time captain and a full-time paramedic firefighter. We're in process of hopefully adding more as we go through years going forward. What the full-time positions do for us allows us greater consistency in staffing. Working with pure per diem and part-time work, though it is somewhat successful, is not the most efficient way of running the department. The wages that are placed in the column there are in pretty much unison with the area towns of what is paid for both firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and such. Does that answer your question, ma'am? I'm not sure I answered everything you wanted, then.
We only have 3,000 people in the town, and we really need full-time?
Yes, ma'am, we do. So the question then was, we only have 3,000 people in the town, and do we really need full-time people? Essentially, the difference is it's in the staffing issue. So we do have 3,000 people in town, I absolutely agree, but we need to keep this fire department up 24 hours a day, seven days a week. One of the things that's become more of a challenge throughout the fire service and the EMS branch of the fire service is attracting consistent staffing for people. There is a lot that goes into the skill of being a paramedic and EMT, and also the regulations that are imposed upon us by the state for training for firefighters. So it's a large commitment, and we don't have that many people in town. We're accepting applications that would like to join our force. We've had more come in, which is awesome, but there is such a commitment in training, it's a much more consistent and safe way, I think, to staff the department.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll now vote. I'm going to vote on these as a block since the question pertained to all three of those. So for the three line items, full-time firefighter/paramedic, full-time lieutenant firefighter/paramedic, and full-time captain/paramedic, all those in favor as written in the warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Section B, highway labor, working foreman, truck driver laborer, motor equipment repairman, equipment operator. All those in favor of Section B as written, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section C, town labor, laborer, town custodian, senior disposal attendant, disposal attendant. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section C as written, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section D, clerical election workers, clerk, senior clerk/warden, constable. All those in favors of Section D, raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section E, permanent staff, all departments, clerk, senior clerk, administrative assistant, assistant to treasurer/collector, assistant Town Clerk, assistant Town Accountant. Hearing no "holds," all those in Section E as written, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section F, library, clerk, circulation clerk, library technician, senior library technician. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section F, raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section G, other employees, special police officer, police matron. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section G as written, raise your hands. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section H, salaried employees, highway superintendent, library director, senior aide. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section H as written, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed, passes unanimously. Section I, professional positions, assistant assessor, health agent, assistant health agent, land use coordinator, conservation agent. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section I as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Section J, stipends, veterans agent, director of elder affairs. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of Section J, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Four. We're always worried about bumping into the special town meeting, but we have 35 minutes, so let's go for it. We are going to move to your budget page. This is, I'm not sure where it is in your warrants, but I'll give you a second to turn to it. It's in the front. Thank you, Nathan. Nathaniel. So we're going to take a similar tact on this, where I will read them in groups. If there's a particular line item that you want to discuss, put a "hold" on it and we'll come back and discuss that. So for insurance premiums, excuse me, insurance, yes, insurance premiums, county pension, group health, Medicare, unemployment. Hearing no "holds," all those for the total insurance and pension section, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, that passes unanimously. General Government, Aeroculture Commission, Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, Open Space, Council on Aging, Council on Aging Director stipend, Council on Aging Support Staff, Finance Committee, Historical Commission, Moderator Salary, Planning Board, Recreation Committee. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of total General Government as printed, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Assessors, assessors salaries, assistant assessor, assessors support staff, assessors expense. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of the total assessors as written, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Town Clerk, Town Clerk salary, certification compensation, Town Clerk Support Staff, Town Clerk expense, election and registration, election support staff. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of the Town Clerk line items, please raise your hand. Thank you. Accountant, tax, and treasurer, accountant/auditor, accountant support staff, accountant expenses, treasurer/tax collector salary, certification compensation, treasurer support staff, treasurer tax collector expense. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of the accountant, tax, and treasurer section, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Selectmen, selectmen stipend, selectmen admin assistant, selectmen expense, town administrator, town administrator expense, computer maintenance, Memorial Day, town buildings, building supplies, town custodial services, town council. Hold on, Town Council? Yes? Yes. Line 260. Town Reports, Utilities. With the exception of the Town Council line item, all those in favor of the total selectmen section as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. We have a "hold" on line 260, Town Council.
Hello. John Duffy, 392 Main Street. I'm just wondering what the, it's a 20% increase. I was just curious as to why such a significant amount.
Mr. Moderator. Nathaniel Sides, Winnetoxet Road, Chairman of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee decided to increase the amount budgeted for this line in anticipation and recognition of the fact that we have several ongoing legal issues pending before the town. We have also exceeded the amount that was budgeted last year by a $10,000 amount that has come out of the reserve fund for this current fiscal year, so we felt it in our best interest to add some more monies this year in anticipation of future needs. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the Town Council line item? Hearing none, all those in favor of line 260, Town Council, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes by majority. Total Board of Health, health stipend, health support staff, health expenses. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of the total Board of Health, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Public Works, Highway Superintendent, Highway Labor, General Highway, Equipment and Maintenance. Hold on Equipment and Maintenance, line 315. Cemetery Department, Cemetery Labor, Parks Department Labor, Snow and Ice, Transfer Station, Transfer Station Staff. With the exception of line 315, all those in favor of the total Public Works section, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. We have a "hold" on line 315, Equipment and Maintenance.
Hi. I guess just the same question as before, and I'm wondering if it's because you're anticipating an increase in expenses in this line item?
You guys want to?
18% increase.
Hello, I'm Scott Ripley, Town Highway Superintendent. Yeah, just an increase in the maintenance budget because we used up our maintenance line well before the end of the year, so the increase was just to, things go up, costs go up, so it just went up a little bit to cover what we need. Good?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Just to add to that, if you look at the information on the budget sheet, fiscal '18 actual expenses were 6733. We only budgeted 6750 in fiscal '19, so we came darn close to exceeding the budget last year, so this is a reasonable increase.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of line 315, Equipment and Maintenance as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Protection Personal Property, Animal Inspector, Animal Control Officer, Animal Control Expense, Tree Warden Salary, Tree Warden Expense. Hearing no "holds," all those in favor of the total Protection and Personal Property lines, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Building Department, Building Inspector, Department of Administrative Assistant, Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Wiring Inspector... and gas inspector, wiring inspector, zoning administrator, department expenses. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total building department as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Fire EMS services, fire chief salary, fire EMS services. Did I miss a hold? Thank you. There's a hold on fire chief salary. Fire EMS services, EMS medical supplies, fire EMS salaries.
Hold.
Hold on fire EMS salaries. Fire department clerical, fire EMS equipment and repair, fire building utilities. With the exception of lines 500 and 510, all those in favor of the fire EMS services as written in the warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. We have a hold on line 500, fire chief salary.
Hi, Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street. I'm wondering why the increase of 30%, that seems excessive.
Finance committee.
Mr. Moderator. John Trainor, 62 Crescent Street. As some of you know, we did a fire search and we brought in Fire Chief Lance Benjamino from Middleborough to help us. During that process, we looked at, we formed a committee, seven people screened and then went forward and brought it down to two people, and based on that, we brought in Fire Chief Stephen Silva. During the process, we wanted to make sure that we were competitive with the towns that touch upon us and some other towns. So we took a look at the salary ranges. To attract a candidate of Mr. Silva's experience, we felt we had to be in this range, and Mr. Benjamino, Fire Chief Benjamino, and others that we checked with said this was the going rate. So that's why we went, talked to the finance committee, and finally voted unanimously to approve this as the salary, and we signed a contract with Fire Chief Stephen Silva for three years.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of line 500, fire chief salary as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes by majority. Line 510, there was a hold on fire EMS salaries.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nathaniel Seitz, finance committee. No discussion, we just wanted to split the funding for this line. I'd like to make a motion, I move that the town vote and, to raise and appropriate the sum of $285,000 and transfer from the ambulance fund, the sum of $200,000, for a total of $485,000 for the fire EMS line 510.
So if that's clear, the total amount has not changed, it's simply where the funds are coming from.
Exactly.
So if there's no other discussion on that, all those in favor of line 510, fire EMS salary as motioned, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Police services, police chief salary, police services, police department clerical, emergency dispatch services, DARE, police department, police station utilities, motor vehicles. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total police services line, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Veterans, veterans agent, veterans administration, veterans benefits. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total veterans line as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Library, library director, library support staff, library expenses. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total library section as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Local school, elementary school costs, special education, vocational education. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total local school section as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Regional schools, regional school assessment, debt and interest, regional school. Hearing no holds, all those in favor of the total regional school section as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Now, the reserve fund interests, principal and interest debt exclusion section. Line 800, reserve fund, interest loan refunds, principal and interest, debt exclusion, police station debt. There's a hold on line 825, police station debt. With the exception of line 825, all those in favor of the reserve fund interest, PNI debt exclusion section, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Now the hold on line 825, police station debt.
Again, Mr. Moderator, not a change to the amount on the line, just merely changing the, the funding source. I move that the town vote to transfer from the capital stabilization fund, the sum of $270,000 for principal and interest on the police station debt. This is probably more commonly referred to as the Cisco money. So this is the, the capital stabilization account that we set up several years ago for these types of, of purchases.
All those in favor of line 825 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. And we're done with the budget. We're cruising right through this, we'll be out of here by nine o'clock. We actually won't, I hope you brought your pillow. Let's see. Article five, financial audits.
Colleen Moore, 11 Granville Bakerway. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $33,000 to conduct the financial audits for fiscal year 2020.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on Article five? All those in favor of Article five as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article six, this is the installation of a fiber optic network.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 for the complete installation of a fiber optic network at the Plimpton Public Library, Plimpton Fire Department, Plimpton Townhouse, Plimpton Police Station, and Plimpton Highway Department, including any and all connections, accessories, and work included or related thereto.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion on that, I believe, town administrator, Elizabeth Dennehy wishes to speak.
I think the chief is going to speak.
So, good evening. Essentially, what we're trying to do here is bring technology to the town. Everyone in, in town knows that when we get a storm, branch comes down, takes some wires down, or a pole, we lose internet, we lose power. We still have power with the generator, but this is going to bring us into the 21st century. It's a redundant system, we'll never lose internet. I can't talk on the technical aspects, I did bring up a pro, Angela Horowitz from Cape Net. Currently, we have, Open Cape, right?
Open Cape.
Open Cape. We have fiber optics right, that runs right down 58, and it's actually running to the building. This is just running it out of the building, and it's going to run it to the town hall, the police station, highway department, library, and fire station. It's, it's just almost a no-brainer. Any, any technical questions? Because I did bring someone for that.
I think the question was, was there enough money? Can you speak to the mic? We'll have to go on record, sorry. Ah, no, it's a pain in the butt.
It's a good point, yeah.
It should be. We've already had a professional come out, give us an estimate for installation in all the facilities, and this will pay for itself in a matter of, what do we figure, four years? Because we won't be paying a climate cast bill then.
Oh, okay.
So.
And it's also because they're already in one of the buildings.
Can you speak to the mic, because we can't hear you?
Sure. She asked, because she asked if there was enough money, it's also because you're connecting your other buildings, we're already in one of the buildings, and we will reestablish that connection, but this is really building a loop between your other buildings, so it's a little more affordable. Did you hear that? Sorry.
Did everyone hear that adequately? I hear a lot of shaking, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, all those in favor of Article six as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article seven, this is an annual lease payment on a police vehicle.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Russo, 140 Palmer Road. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $13,000 to make the annual lease payment on a police patrol vehicle on a lease-to-own replacement program.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second, and chief, you'd like to speak to this?
Yes. Does everyone remember nine years ago when I would be so nervous coming up here and speaking in front of town meeting? Not anymore. Anyways, this is just our vehicle replacement program, we need permission from the town to enter into three-year lease-to-own program. So this is the first year of lease payments. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of Article seven as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, pass, passes by majority. What's that? Are you sure? Oh, I missed that one. Okay, we're good, just a little procedural thing here. Article eight, this is a highway housekeeping, chapter, chapter 90 funds article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept and expend such sums of money allotted or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement program for the fiscal year 2020, and borrow in anticipation of reimbursement the sum of $169,191, as may be available as the state's share of the cost of work, said Chapter 90.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, this takes, this takes a two-thirds vote in order to pass. So all those in favor of Article eight as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article nine, dealing with road repairs.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 for road construction and resurfacing, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article nine as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 10, a lease purchase agreement for a heavy-duty dump truck.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectment to enter into an agreement to lease purchase and equip a heavy-duty dump truck pursuant to the provisions of General Law's Chapter 44, 20, subsection 21(c), for a period in excess of three years, and to transfer from the capital stabilization fund the sum of $17,000 to make the first payment on said truck.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second, any questions, comments on Article 10? Hearing none, because this is also from capital stabilization fund, it requires two-thirds vote for passage, all those in favor of Article 10, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 11 has to do with community preservation committee.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Russo, 140 Palmer Road. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant. Mr. Moderator, this is a article that, a housekeeping article that is mandated by Community Preservation Act law, we pass it each year. Essentially, Community Preservation Act mandates that communities put aside a certain minimum amount of money in various categories, and that's what we're asking to do.
Any further discussion on Article 11? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article 11 as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 12, this is a Dennett Elementary School Playground Safety Accessibility and Modernization Project.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
I'll second the motion.
It's moved in second, and anyone wish to speak to this? I have a feeling there is, there he is.
Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street, vice chair of the Dennett Elementary School, Plimpton School Committee. I would just like to take an opportunity to thank the Community Preservation Committee for partnering with the Plimpton Elementary School Committee on this project. We've been looking at the accessibility issues of our playground for the past five years, been doing site visits to other schools and other towns in the area. We've also been considering the safety of the impacts of falls from some of the higher structures, and looking at retrofitting our current equipment to make it safer for all students. And we've also been talking to consultants who work with playground equipment and young children. Right now, the Dennett Playground is primarily utilized by our K-2 students, and much of the equipment out there isn't developmentally appropriate for them, they don't have the upper body strength and balance techniques to utilize those pieces of equipment safely. We have raised over $134,000 independently through our school choice program over the past five years in order to put in a new playground, and with the additional $94,000 from the Community Preservation Act, we will be able to complete a playground project for this school to make it accessible, safe, and developmentally appropriate for all of our children. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on Article 12? Hearing none, all those in favor of Article 12 as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, Article 13, Plimpton Community Preservation Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me? Can I have to make this bigger?
I'll just pull the mic right out of there.
Yeah, okay. Linda Letty, 44 West Street. Mr. Moderator, I'm here on behalf of the Plimpton Open Space Committee to ask the town to support renewing a pre-acquisition grant to the Open Space Committee to keep our preparedness up in terms of land opportunities that come before the town from time to time. The first time we did this was in 2011, when we hoped to establish a park that turned later into Churchill Park in 2012, along with Cato's Ridge, and that was the first time we realized that the town had to be prepared to take advantage of things. In that case, it was a tax title issue, and we were able to help resolve that tax title at low cost to both the town and to the donors. A couple years later, in 2014, we came back again and, and called it pre-acquisition, because that's what it is, we don't buy land with this money, but we look for opportunities where people may be interested in working with the town and helping the town to get land conserved. So in that case, we ended up working with Roger O'Neil on Ring Road, and he worked, we helped him work with the state to get a tax rebate that's very useful to residents who, throughout the state, who have land they want to donate, and in return, we have that wonderful O'Neil Marsh now, that was the third part of the new parks that comes in from Ring Road. And then in 2016... And then in 2016, we came to this town meeting for another renewal to be prepared. And in that case, we were looking at special places in town. We had just updated the open space plan, and we knew we were very concerned about areas that have special environmental assets, particularly water. And in the open space plan survey that year, when we surveyed all of you about residents' top priorities, your top priorities were to protect our water quality and quantity, and also to maintain our rural character. So we knew there would be opportunities, we hoped, in the next couple of years, and we sat on it for about two years. But last year in 2018, if you remember, one of the most beautiful parts of town over on the western side had been in Cranberry Boggs, and the family was going to sell it. And the first bidders who wanted to buy it were going to convert it to a gravel operation, and that would be damaging environmentally and to the water and all kinds of stuff like that. So we moved and again used our pre-acquisition grant to do all the due diligence to make sure that legally and technically and environmentally it was a good thing to do. And with all of your help, last November, we had a great special meeting here, and we voted that in, and we now have a preserve over there to protect those special qualities. So we're out of money, and so here we are again. Every three or four years, we come back. This time, the quality, the focus that is going to continue to be on water. Having done the, we now call it the Two Brooks Preserve Project, having done that, and we started working with the hydrogeologist and talking more to DEP about water issues in the town. And we realized that, like so many other things, I'll say editorially, sometimes Plimpton just has done its own thing, its own way, and sometimes that's not in the way that sometimes the state thought would do it. And in that case, the state passed a law quite a few years ago to encourage towns to protect their future water supplies. And you do that by having designated areas called community wells. Now, in some towns, a lot of towns have piped water systems, you know, and we don't have that. We're all on private wells, but we all still care even more about protecting the quality of our water and making sure we have enough in the future. And sort of to my shock, and I think some of the rest of us on Open Space, we do not own one community well in town. And that means that we're not protecting our future assets that we might want to draw on someday. Doesn't mean we want a public water supply system, but we do want to know that we have enough water to sort of conserve and protect the people who want to live here in the town and that the assets that go with it. So we have just started a water study committee to get this going. That same hydrogeologist who helped us over on Prospect Road last summer is helping us now, and we are going to be identifying key areas, whether they be publicly or privately owned, we'll have to explore. And we hope to have the opportunity to work to buy those key wellheads. I guess a community wellhead is often 11 to 15 acres. And there are generous grants from the state to help towns conserve and protect their water that we will qualify for by bringing CPC money, again, in this case, to buy key wellhead areas that are identified through the water study. So this is a very important thing that the town has innocently neglected, and in terms of the future of the town, we want to make sure our water resources are protected. So we do ask you that you renew a pre-acquisition grant to the Open Space Committee, and it will be for general pre-acquisition purposes. And we are signaling to you that we believe that a lot of these will be directed towards looking at water resources in the town over the next two or three years.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Thirteen as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Let's see if we can squeeze in another one here. Article Fourteen. This is to amend the wage and personnel bylaw.
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Chairman of the Wage and Personnel. I move that the town vote to approve this article as printed in the warrant.
I'll second.
Just a quick rationale. In years past, wage and personnel would vote on a percentage for cost-of-living adjustments, which you just did earlier this evening. And then department heads could recommend up to 2% merit-based increase for their employees. The merit-based increase was essentially a given, as people would use it almost like a built-in step increase of sorts to help move employees up through their pay range. Through this article, we are hoping to reestablish this increase as a true merit-based increase in order to reward exceptional performance and increased productivity. We have built in some checks and balances, including final review and approval by town administrator, and that said merit increases shall not exceed maximum pay range within the wage and personnel board's classification chart. Thank you.
Any questions, comments on Article Fourteen? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Fourteen as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. I declare it now to be eight o'clock, and we will, I have to do this officially. Hold on, please. We're going to move to the special town meeting. So I make a motion that the annual town meeting be adjourned to conduct a special town meeting. There being a quorum present and having been advised by the town clerk that the special town meeting warrant has been properly served, oops, am I jumping too far ahead? We need to vote on that, don't we? Let's vote on that before I tell you that we're opening the special. All those in favor of adjourned annual town meeting to go to special town meeting, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, now we're in, passes unanimously, we're in special town meeting. So these are articles that are dealing with our current fiscal year. We've been looking ahead, now we're coming back to the present. Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $35,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to pay for any unexpected ancillary costs related to the move and/or outfitting of the new Plimpton Police Station.
Second.
Chief, would you like to speak to that?
Hi, it's me, my last time up here. I won't keep you long. So, as you know, last year, we got unanimous approval for the new building. One thing that we heard all along the way was they were keeping the cost down and everything. So we're trying to fix some of the things. This is for ancillary costs, some things like two bullet-resistant windows in the lobby. The lobby didn't come with bullet-resistant windows, so we've got to correct that. Other things, the cost of moving, the cost of taking down the old sign in the building, a new alarm system, and any number of other things that might pop up. So this is just to cover our backside.
Any questions, comments on Article One? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article One as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $6,897 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to pay the following unpaid bills for prior fiscal year. To KP Law, $5,474.15. To Lori Hunter, $800. To Dean Sylvester, $515.23. To DRK Toilets, $64. And WB Mason, $43.19. For a total of $6,896.57.
Any questions, comments on Article Two?
I don't know. Good question.
Nine tenths. Is that what you're getting? Okay.
Yeah, the totals don't match. You got a math issue?
There's a math issue. We're going to do a little math here for a moment. Please hold on. Just got a calculator going. No, but the math isn't right this time. There's a penny off.
$43.03.
Forty-three cents off?
Forty-three cents.
All right. So what's the right number that they need to vote on?
They should do the 68.97.
Sixty-eight. Okay.
68.57.
Sixty-eight. Okay. The exact number that you're going to be voting on, because we're arguing over 43 cents, is $6,896.57. So with all those in favor of that as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed. Apparently, we didn't have a second on that. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Now we have a second. Let's vote again. All those in favor of Article Two as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Well, that was a tough one, huh? Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $30,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to be added to the OPEB account.
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions, comments on Article Three? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Three as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $10,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to be added to the town Buildings and Maintenance Emergency Article.
Second.
Moved in second. And any discussion on Article Four? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Four as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $20,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to fund the renovations and accessibility repairs to the Plimpton Townhouse, and all costs incidental or relative thereto.
Second.
Any comments on Article Five? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Five as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Chief Silva.
Chief Dillon, I understand how you felt. Your first night here. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance for the purchase of three multi-gas meters for the Plimpton Fire Department.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on Article Six?
So what we're proposing at this time is three multi-gas meters that are used in firefighting to make sure that we have a safe atmosphere during the overhaul and makeup time of any incident we're at. They also work for identifying carbon dioxide, hydrogen cyanide, oxygen levels, and explosive limits. We're proposing three of these meters. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Six as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, Chief Silver again, and I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $6,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance for the purchase of two thermal imaging cameras for the Plimpton Fire Department. Thermal imaging cameras, the ones we are proposing, also have a color-metric option to them. Thermal imaging is used in dark conditions, smoke conditions, no-visibility conditions to actually find the seat of the fire or excessive heat when we're in an investigation process, trying to figure out where we have an issue. One of the things we have for an issue right now is some of our cameras, we have two, I believe, right now that are non-functional completely and are older and cannot be repaired. These cameras here give us a better visibility, and with a color-metric addition to them, the firefighter is able not only to see the temperatures they're looking at, but they gives a shading from literally a white to a dark red. And in a low-visibility situation, just being able to see the color alone will allow us to find somebody that we need to figure out if we're in trouble ourselves or find where the source of the heat is coming from.
I'll second the motion.
And I should have done that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Oh, yes, we have a question.
Shelley Caparis, 81 Upland Road. I just have a question. Are these, isn't this special for last year? So these sound like new purchases that should be on the budget for this year. I just need some clarification.
I'll let Finance take a crack at that.
Gee, thanks. What we are doing is, you're right, this is a new purchase that will be completed after tonight's meeting, but we had some funding that was returned to the town for use. So rather than put it on the annual town meeting to be spent next year after July 1st by spending it at the special town meeting, it allows the chief to purchase it sooner and get it online faster. So it's money that we've already appropriated last year for other purposes, but we're transferring it because it was not spent last year. We're re-appropriating it for these purposes. Damn, I thought I was doing well.
So was it, I know you were doing great. So was it in his budget last year, or was it from somewhere else?
This is from the group insurance line. So the group insurance costs that we budgeted and appropriated last year, when the actual bill came due, it came in less than what we had budgeted for. So we had monies left over, if you will, that we took and have allocated for these five or six articles that we've appropriated so far.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
So to answer the unasked question, this is not raising your tax bill.
David Dederman, 32 Parsonage Road. So as I understand it, the healthcare costs were less for the group, as I understand it? And how come the employees of the town, their premiums continue to rise and there's no adjustment made for going forward?
I'm not even going to attempt to touch that one. When we budget for a group insurance line, we don't know how many of the town employees will take advantage of the benefit of having insurance through the town. So we have to budget a line item dollar amount as if the majority of them are going to take advantage of that benefit. The reality is that several of them don't. So we budget as if the town has to contribute to their insurance premiums, and then when folks either have insurance through another avenue, through a spouse, or a different employer, then the money that we have budgeted for the town's portion of their premium is returned to us, and we are able to reallocate it as we are doing right now.
Sorry, just another clarification. How can that money not go back to the employees that are paying the premiums?
That's not a question for town meeting.
Yeah, that's, where that's coming, how that gets allocated isn't relevant to this particular piece, it's extra money, and that's what we're dealing with. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Seven as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes by majority. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $7,000 from the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance for the purchase of tablets and associated software required to work in conjunction with the town's ambulance billing system, including costs for installation, programming, and setup costs incidental relative thereto.
I'll second the motion.
Currently, our billing system and EMS reporting system for patient care reports are computerized, which they need to be by law. The systems we're using right now are antiquated. We have two ambulances with only one laptop that's functioning at this time. The laptop that has failed is no longer repairable, as I'm sure people understand here, when your computer breaks, it seems like they've, well, they just don't get repaired the way they should be, I suppose. So we are in desperate need of these units. We're switching to tablets. They're a ruggedized tablet. The manufacturer whom I'm speaking to about these has assured us they are well firefighter-proof, we shall see. But we do need these. We're looking for three. We have two ambulances. We'll have one in backup. They also come with an extensive warranty that covers not only damage, incidental damage, but also for software protection and such.
Any further discussion on Article Eight? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Article Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer nine thousand from the May two thousand and eighteen Annual Town Meeting Budget Line Twenty Group Insurance to fund handicap accessibility repairs to the Plimpton Public Library in all costs incidental related thereto. Presently, the door, as you go into the library, there's two doors. The first door in, we've been having problems with because when it's really windy sometimes, if the door is slightly open, it just whips it, and we've tried to repair it. It's getting beyond repair. The second part is, since we have to repair that, right now, there is no button that you press if you're in a wheelchair or disabled. And it just, I'm not sure why the state let us do that. So now, we're going to do that so there'll be a button inside and outside that will open the doors for people who are disabled.
Any further discussion on Article Nine? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Nine as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the sale of the town property account to cover the cost of repairs for the Plimpton Fire Station in all costs incidental and related thereto. Currently, the fire station is in a bit of disrepair. We have not only outgrown it as a facility itself, but as many of you have probably noticed, we have a bit of a trailer in the parking lot where the crews live in. This is an inefficient way to run a fire station. We feel with these monies here, we have designed a way to upgrade the electrical system, which has to be done. We've had the electrical inspector look at it, it's currently unsafe. Adding alarm system in the building. We've already addressed the diesel particulate. We'll be able to put in two bunk rooms, so we'll have better control of staff and personnel, kitchen area and training area. It's a tight budget, but I believe we can do it for this.
Any further discussion on Article Ten?
Mr. Moderator, I just, for point of information for the town, the thirty thousand dollars that is referenced in this article is monies that was received by the sale of the excess fire department pumper, or, excuse me, engine that was sold this past year. It was sold for, I believe, sixty thousand dollars. Previous thirty thousand dollars was also spent on the fire department to upgrade and bring into compliance the exhaust capturing system so that we could make the station habitable, as the chief just outlined.
Any other discussion on Article Ten? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Ten as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Article Eleven.
John Wilhelmsen, two fifty-five Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as written in the warrant.
Wish to speak to this?
Just briefly. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward with what's in the warrant, but I'll just call attention to the fact that we had some extra money available in the vocational education line, some of which is being returned to the town. And then for these three items, we're just looking to do some replacement of some broken items, as well as to take the seven thousand dollars to fully fund the Special Needs Reserve Fund, which we put into place last year, which is available for us throughout the year if we needed to address special education needs that are unforeseen within the budget.
Any further discussion on Article Eleven? Yes. Yes, please.
John Duffy again, three ninety-two Main Street. I just have a question about the second part of this. The above, that's, so that's eighty-five hundred for expenses related to a copy machine? Like, one copy machine? Am I understanding this correctly?
John, would you like to answer that?
Yes, that's the cost for a, you know, commercial machine.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Eleven as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously. So we are done with our special town meeting. So I make a motion that the special town meeting be dissolved and that we return to the annual town meeting. It's been moved in second. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously. So we're back to Article Fifteen in your annual town meeting playbook.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ethan Stiles, eighty-five West Street, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Article Fifteen, I move that the town transfer from precash the sum of two thousand dollars for the purpose of preparing the fiscal two thousand twenty interim year real property valuation of the town. Yes, yes, Mr. Moderator. We introduce an article like this every year. It is required for our values to be approved every year, that we budget money aside to hire an external contractor, usually a vision government systems, to assist us in preparing our valuations for the year. And that is why we, that's why we need this money for this year.
Any further discussion on Article Fifteen? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Fifteen as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously. Article Sixteen. Mr. Stiles.
Yes. I move that the town vote to transfer from precash the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars for the purpose of preparing the fiscal twenty twenty-two Centennial Real Property Valuation for the town. The only difference between this article and the previous article is that every, several number of years, we have a reval year. And that's, in this time, it'll be twenty twenty-two. And so every year, we have a warrant article where we budget money toward that reval evaluation, because that evaluation is a far more substantial undertaking than the yearly evaluation. So that's why we have, that's why last year, you'll see a similar article, and next year, you'll see a similar article. So that when in two thousand twenty-two comes around, we'll be fully funded to engage the outside work that we'll need to meet our obligations, our reporting obligations regarding our valuations to the state.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Sixteen? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Sixteen as read, please raise your hands. Thank you, those opposed. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
So Article Seventeen is going to involve a PowerPoint presentation, and I think it's a good time to maybe stretch our legs and take a break while we get that set up. Sorry, Ann and Alan. There are some cookies in the back. I encourage you to fill your stomachs for a long night, get some sugar going, visit our Girl Scouts, and we'll see you in about ten minutes. Okay, folks, Article Seventeen. This is the Schedule of Uses for our Plimpton zoning bylaws. First order of business is to have a planning board report.
Planning board report coming up.
Hi, Deborah Anderson, forty-nine Elm Street. At a public hearing held April sixteenth, the planning board voted five-zero to approve to bring this article to town meeting for your vote. I'm going to turn this over to Alan.
Yes, please.
And also, can she do them both at the same time?
Can what?
Seventeen and eighteen.
You can talk to, you're going to present in your PowerPoint seventeen and eighteen at the same time?
Yeah.
Yes, since they're tied together, we will accept that. But let's, we'll do the planning, we'll do the voting and all that, and the reports separate, so your presentation can be tied together. Now, we need a motion, so we know what we're talking about here. And that would be Mr. Wheelock, I believe.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Okay, this is, because it's a bylaw, a zoning bylaw, it's going to require two-thirds vote when we get to that point. But because it's a fairly in-depth piece that's going on here, there's a PowerPoint, so I'm going to step out of the way and let Alan and Ann talk you through the PowerPoint, which addresses both Article Seventeen and eighteen. But we are only at this point going to vote on Article Seventeen when they're done.
Perfect, thank you, Brian. Okay, the Plimpton Bylaw Review Committee is now entering its third year. There are seven of your very talented co-residents on that committee, plus me. And they're doing excellent work. Our focus this year, this past year, was two major things. The Schedule of Uses Table and the definitions of the uses that accompany that table. So if you'll turn to page seventeen in your warrant article book, there you will see what we propose the new Schedule of Uses is going to look like. Schedule of Uses is foundational for our zoning regulations. Basically, a Schedule of Uses or an Allowed Uses Table tells you what can be done in this town and what cannot. If it's not listed, it cannot be done. This is not unique to Plimpton. Every other town has a Schedule of Uses in this area, and it's the same law. If it's not there, you cannot do it. It has not been reviewed or revised for many years. Some of the stuff is incredibly outdated. So we have spent an entire year revising and updating this. If you look at the table, you'll notice that there are four columns. Those are your overlay districts. And by, what they mean is AR is agricultural residential, B is business, LM is light manufacturing, and I is industrial. Those are the use districts of our town. When we started last year, there were eighty-nine uses in the schedule. And it's nothing more, if you look at it today, it's just an alphabetical list. Begins with acid manufacturing, goes all the way down to wireless communications. It was not organized by use category and not very user-friendly. As proposed by the Bylaw Review Committee, it will now be seventy-five potential land use categories. Most of that reduction is caused by us consolidating multiple listings of kind of the same use in the same category. We moved them to the definitions, and I'll show you what I mean by that in a second. Here's what it looks like. If you had the Town of Plimpton zoning regulations with you, and you looked at it, it looks like this. Acid, you know, starts with acid manufacturing, goes alphabetical. And look at the listings. X means you can't do it. SP means you can do it with special permit. P means it's permitted. Very simple, very old-fashioned. Here's what the new one's going to look like. Whoops. The new one, as you can see, is now organized by category. We found that many people who were starting projects in Plimpton couldn't even find, you know, the use that they were about to embark on. They couldn't even find it in the table. We've made it much easier by organizing it, as you see. We also made special permits easier to understand. If you needed a special permit in Plimpton, we were told many times, town employees would find people wandering the halls at the townhouse once saying they needed a special permit and not even knowing who should they go to? Planning Board, Board of Health, zoning Board of Appeals? No one knew. To solve that, we created this table. As you can see, what was formerly permitted is now going to be called allowed. And for the special permits, we've now directed you, a town resident or a person doing a project, who you go to. You go to the planning board, it's SPPB. Zoning Board of Appeals is SPZBA. If you need a site plan review from the planning board, SPRPB. Very clear. We hope that will help everyone in town a lot. And we changed, we kept the X, because it's very clear. If a use is listed as X, it's not allowed in the Town of Plimpton, period. In Definitions, which is going to be Article Eighteen, and it begins on page ten or eleven of your warrant article book, the definitions in the current Plimpton zoning regulations are very poor, very, not very many of them, not very clear. We split into three subcommittees, put in a tremendous amount of work, and our goal was to create a definition for every single use in the town that's in the table, and we did that. And as you'll see, they go on for six or seven pages in your warrant article book. We organize them just the same way we organize the table. Used to be just alphabetical, now it's broken down residential, commercial, industrial, and so on and so forth, to make it easier for you to find things when you're working with this document. The major area, we were able to streamline things. Simple example, in the old table, this is really weird. The Town of Plimpton, the old uses table started off with adult section, and it had like thirteen adult things. You know, video stores, adult retail establishments, all this weird stuff, all of which was prohibited, but they had them all listed. So we eliminated all those uses and just put them in the definition. And in the definition, it says, under the adult use category, you know, all these different adult uses are defined, but you can't do them. So it made the definitions clearer, and it streamlined the list. Same thing with hazardous manufacturing. There's thirteen types of really bad, like acid, radioactive waste, and all this stuff listed in the current table. We thought, let's just put those in the definitions and say those are not allowed, and that really streamlined the table. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Yes, the town clerk's office reprints the Town of Plimpton zoning regulations every year, and those are available. I'm not sure, maybe the town clerk can say how they're distributed, or the town administrator. They're also going to be online, by the way. Yeah, and they can go right to the website, right, and get them?
They'll be on the website.
Did you hear that? So you can get? And if you want a hard copy, you must sell those, I believe, don't you? Ten dollars apiece for a good hard copy of our bylaws.
Right, Amy was just pointing out that one thing we do have to wait for is, after this meeting votes on these zoning article changes, it goes to the Attorney General's Office for approval. Last year, I think that took two or three months.
Alan, you don't have any other slides, do you? Or do you have more slides?
No, that's it.
Right. Whoever dim the lights, could you shoot them back up? That would be great. Or did they just happen magically? I guess it was magic. It's all right.
Any other questions for us? Thank you.
Okay, any further questions on Article Seventeen? Hearing none. Again, this takes a two-thirds vote for passage. All those in favor of Article Seventeen as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, thanks for the lights, too. All those opposed. Passes unanimously. Article Eighteen. Just catching up to you. Yes, Mr. Wheelock.
I move that the town vote to approve Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant.
Moved in second. We need a planning board report, please.
Hi, Deborah Anderson, forty-nine Elm Street. At a public hearing held April sixteenth, the planning board voted five-zero to approve bringing this article to town meeting.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak to Article Eighteen? Here we go.
Ann Soboleski, two fifty-five Main Street. I'm a member of the Bylaw Review Committee and the-
I'm a member of the Bylaw Review Committee and the Planning Board. This is the definitional section that we just discussed in the PowerPoint.
Any questions on Article 18? Hearing none. This is another two-thirds vote, since it's a bylaw change. All those in favor of Article 18 as written, please raise your hands. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll get to Article 19 in a moment here, there's a lot of pages to flip through. Article 19, building height.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as- Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
It's moved in second. We also need a Planning Board report on this article.
At a public hearing held April 16th, the Planning Board voted 5-0 to approve bringing this article to town meeting for your vote.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 19?
Okay, so this is another definitional change, but it isn't a definition that's contained in the previous article because it doesn't have to do with the Table of Uses. This is a change to the definition of building height. I don't know if people have noticed that a lot of the new dwellings that are being constructed in town are utilizing a unique interpretation of height. It's an area that we haven't had to deal with in the past. What's been happening, a lot of these buildings are not actually two-and-a-half-story tall buildings on three of their sides, because people are pushing a big mound of dirt up in front of the house, and they're really three-and-a-half stories on the back and the sides. And that's allowed at the moment because our building height definition doesn't prevent that. So what this does is it levels the playing field. We've always had a two-and-a-half-story height limitation, and this will ensure that people can't go around the actual rules and build buildings that are taller and out of proportion to the surrounding houses.
Any questions, comments, discussion on Article 19? Yes, Mr. Butler?
It's the same as it's always been. We're not changing the height. It's two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet. Things like antennas, chimneys, other projections, those can be above that height limitation. But what we're doing is saying you have to measure it from the natural grade before you start your construction. So you can't, you can't just push a big mound of dirt up in front of the house and really be building a three-and-a-half-story tall house.
It doesn't give you the height and you have to-
The building height is in the dimensional section of the zoning bylaw where the height is specified. This is just the definition. So it would say, you look, this is how we define how you measure height.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Again, this is a two-thirds vote, since it's a bylaw change. All those in favor of Article 19 as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 20, this is recreational and medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
It's moved in second. We need a Planning Board report, please.
At the public hearing held April 16th, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5-0 to bring this article to town meeting for your vote.
Any discussion on Article 20?
Okay, so if everyone remembers from reading the newspaper, the Attorney General did not allow our moratorium to continue on recreational marijuana. So we had to very quickly draft marijuana bylaw that would cover recreational marijuana. What we ended up doing was taking the existing medical marijuana bylaw and consolidating it with a recreational marijuana bylaw. So if you look through the booklet, you'll see that this covers both of those types of marijuana establishments. It requires a special permit, subject to conditions. We also didn't just focus on recreational marijuana in terms of a retail store. We thought about instances where it might be beneficial to the town, where you could have growing establishments, which are indoors by nature, and manufacturing and assembly facilities as well. So we didn't just focus on retail stores, we really looked at the entire universe of recreational marijuana establishments and sought to come up with policies and procedures that would accurately reflect the town's needs and interests while still allowing people to obtain a special permit in order to conduct those types of uses.
Any further discussion, questions, comments on Article 20? Hearing none. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 20 as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. I'll get there eventually. Thank you. Article 21, this is a definition bylaw.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
And a Planning Board report, please.
Deborah Anderson, Chairman of the Planning Board. At a public hearing held April 16th, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5-0 to approve bringing this article to the town meeting.
This, again, has to do with dealing with the recreational marijuana permitting. Because this is language that would be located in the definition section of the bylaw and not in Section 9, it needs to be its own warrant article. But these are the definitions for those terms that are used in the article that we previously voted on.
Thank you. Any questions on these definitions? Hearing none. Again, two-thirds vote required. All those in favor of Article 21 as written in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 22, this is a floodplain watershed protection district bylaw. Would you like to make a motion, sir?
I'd like to make a motion that we-
And identify yourself, please.
Richard Burnett, 271 Main Street. I'd like to make a motion that we pass this as written, and I'm happy to give some explanation if anybody would like some.
Oh yes, thank you. Planning Board report.
At the public hearing held April 16th, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5-0 to approve bringing this article to town meeting.
Rick, do you want to speak to this, or you just want to have any questions?
Any questions? If anybody doesn't, happy to. Just gives us a little equity. Previous cranberry growers are the only one that could put up a structure in a floodplain. Does not allow anybody to get past any wetlands bylaws, just gets us past the zoning step. And also with municipal projects as well. Just lets us get past the zoning part of it. Still have to abide by all wetlands regulations.
Any further questions, comments on Article 22? Hearing none. Question, yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Just a clarification. Paul Hadju, 30 Cross Street. My question is, what are you considering the floodplain? How broad is this floodplain?
Oh, it's the federal.
Rick, can you speak to the mic?
It's not the Sukuma floodplain.
The question is, what's considered the floodplain?
We have the floodplain and watershed protection district, which is an overlay district in the zoning bylaw. So I don't have the overlay district map here, but it's already defined in the zoning bylaw as to what that land area is.
It's been mapped for many years. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Two-thirds vote is required again on Article 22. All those in favor as written, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, we ask this to be passed over.
Do I have to have the Planning Board report? Is it unnecessary since question? Okay. We have a motion to pass over Article 23. There's no reason to have a Planning Board report. All those in favor of passing over Article 23, it's a simple majority at this point, please raise your hand. Those opposed, it's passed over unanimously. Article 24, dealing with solar bylaw.
Deborah Anderson, 49 Elm Street. At the meeting of the Plimpton Planning Board held, oh, April 29th, the Planning Board voted to hold for further review. Article 24, excuse me, too many papers here. So this article is going back to the town, back to the Planning Board for further study as voted at our meeting on April 29th.
Okay, so that's the Planning Board report, and so now we would need a motion-
I'll move that the town refer back to the Planning Board for further study, Article 24. Is there a second?
Okay, so the motion is to move this article back to the Planning Board for further study. Any questions or comments on that motion of Article 24? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes by majority. Article 25, also a solar bylaw. Planning Board report.
At the meeting of the Planning Board on April 29th, we voted to refer Article 25 back to the Planning Board for further study. I move that the town refer back to the Planning Board for further study, Article 25.
Moved in second, and again, to move Article 25 back to the Planning Board. Any questions, comments, questions on 25? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 25 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes by majority. Article 26, this is from the Bylaw Review Committee.
Anne Sobleski, 255 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Wish to speak to this?
Yes. So this is an article, it's a general bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw. It's something that Halifax has. Our building commissioner actually drafted it for the Town of Halifax, because that's where he lives and that's where he's on the boards there. This will allow him to have a list of people who he can contact in the event of a foreclosed property in town becoming a nuisance or a hazard. It really provides him with additional information, and it can assist him in dealing with situations where a property has been foreclosed and abandoned and is becoming a blight.
Any further questions, comments on Article 26? Hearing none. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 26 as printed in your warrant, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 27, this deals with a fire lease purchase. Chief?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement to lease purchase and equip a command vehicle for the fire department pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of not in excess of three years, and transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $18,000 to make the first payment for said vehicle.
Second.
Yes.
We are proposing a purchase of what we're calling a command vehicle to replace the current 2011 Expedition, which has in excess of 115,000 miles on it. My role as fire chief, it's almost a dual role where I have a lot of operational responsibilities, not just administrative. I am called to the scene frequently, not only in this town, but in conjoining communities. And in that case, we need a vehicle more easily equipped to carry the various command tools that I need, as well as some light rescue. We're proposing a pickup truck, a simple one-ton pickup truck with a cap and some radio equipment and areas of storage that make more sense, especially in inclement weather, for protecting the equipment they have onboard. This will be all-inclusive, including all the emergency lighting, radios, and such.
Any questions, as been described? Okay, hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote because it is taking money from Capital Stabilization Fund. So all those in favor of Article 27 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 28, this is for the annual lease payments on a fire department vehicle. Chief?
Again, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $48,903.05 to pay for the annual lease payments for the fire department vehicles as part of the lease purchase agreement previously authorized. This is an ongoing article that shows up every year for the leases we currently have on two of our apparatus at this time.
Any questions on Article 28?
Second.
Oh, a second, thank you. Now any questions? So I'm just moving this thing right along here. Do you want to comment on it? Hearing none. All those in favor of, this is two-thirds again because it's capital stabilization. All those in favor of Article 28 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 29, starring the chief again, personal protective equipment.
Apparently I should be asking for Robert's rules instead. Sorry about that. Article 29, again, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 for the purchase of new personal protective equipment, PPE, to replace aging PPE.
Got it.
This is an article that shows up almost annually in our town budget. We are regulated by NFPA as well as OSHA to replace personal protective gear such as firefighter turnout gear, helmets, gloves, boots, et cetera, on a timed basis. They actually do have a shelf life, and failure to replace these, and if anyone should get hurt, we will hold the liability. So it's just an ongoing expense that we have. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Because this is from free cash, we're back to a simple majority. All those in favor of Article 29 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Article 30, this is a PEG access and cable-related special revenue fund.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Mr. Moderator, this article deals with accounting issues. It establishes a separate revenue account for funds received from the cable access fees, and it's established so that those funds can go for their intended purpose for PEG access, that is, public education and government.
Any questions on Article 30? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 30 as printed in your warrant, please raise your hands. Thank you, those opposed, passes unanimously. Article 31, a part-time school resource officer.
Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street, Chairman of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $14,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School. part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School. Recently, we had a safety audit done at the Silver Lake campus for both the high school and the middle school. I'd like to thank the chiefs for participating in that process. We evaluated concerns about the layout of our campus and any threats potentially to the students in the buildings. And one of the recommendations was to include a resource officer for our students at the middle school. Currently, Kingston pays for a full-time school resource officer for the high school, and we have no officer at the middle school. This would put in place an initial program to bring a school resource officer in for our middle school students as well. Sadly, we realize that they're facing many of the same challenges that our high school students are facing. And we believe that this is money well-spent to educate those students, to bring a positive police presence into the building, and to keep our students safe. Thank you.
Any questions for the comments?
This resource officer is being paid by Plimpton and Halifax?
This portion of the money tonight would be our portion of the school resource officer. Halifax, at their town meeting, declined to vote this article through.
So what does that mean? What are we actually paying for?
That means unfortunately, we will have less hours of coverage with the school resource officer at the middle school. However, if Plimpton votes tonight to allocate the $14,000, we will move forward with the program with the funds that are available to us from Plimpton.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 31 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Passes by majority. Article 32, bylaw codification. Alan.
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $2,000 for bylaw codification.
Would you like to speak to this?
This is a project that started in 2017. Tara Shaw, our town clerk, was managing and a strong proponent of this. Recently, Liz, our town administrator, and Tricia, our current town clerk, met with the vendor, General Code, which is based in Rochester, New York. We were quite impressed. The project is about halfway through. It's basically digitizing what is currently a paper town of Plimpton zoning regulation document. It's turning it into a digital document and also correcting a lot of its weaknesses in terms of compliance with state laws and things like that. I've been in a lot of vendor discussions. I was extremely impressed with the professionalism and the competence of that company. So I think it's a great project. This, I believe, pertains to the next payment. There are six payments. Three have been paid. There's three more left to be paid.
Any further questions on Article 32? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article 32 as read, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 33. This is a lease purchase for a handicap-accessible van sponsored by the Plimpton Council on Aging. And I need to point out that this was not recommended by the Board of Selectmen, was recommended by the Finance Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. James Mustak Harris, 76 Parsonage Road. Article 33. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with lease and/or purchase and equip a handicap-accessible van for the council on aging pursuant to provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c) for a period in excess of three years, and to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $12,000 to make the first payment on said van upon trade-in and/or sale of current vehicle. Thank you.
I could use a second. There being a second, we can now discuss Article 33.
Mr. Moderator. Thane Besides Finance Committee. At the time the Finance Committee voted on this article, we debated it for some time because this article has been coming before us for several years now. And it had been placed in the capital fund budget for fiscal '22. So this article is before you, is coming before you a couple of years ahead of schedule from the Finance Committee's standpoint. Also, at the time that we voted on this article, we were unaware that there are apparently some negotiations going on to secure some grants that may help to pay for this vehicle going forward. The current vehicle in use, while limited, is still functional. And so at this time, the Finance Committee is withdrawing its recommendation for this article.
Mr. Moderator, I would just like to give a brief explanation as to why the Board of Selectmen chose not to support this article at this time. And it's not that we don't believe that there's a senior transportation need in the town. That's not it. We felt like we didn't have enough information to make an informed decision about whether or not this particular vehicle is what is needed at the town at this time. So what I would recommend is that we work with the council on aging and for three months, get some very detailed recording of the trips that you're using, you're making. We need the regular day, week, monthly trip volume. How many of these trips need wheelchair or other type of handicap-accessible transportation? I'd want to know your average run mileage. Are these single transports or are they multiple? What's the purpose? Are we taking people to doctor's appointments? Or are we going grocery shopping where it might be possible to have people, you know, advertise that we're going to be doing this and take multiple people at one time? So then, after we do the three months of recording, the Board of Selectmen would apply for a community compact best practices grant to look at our senior needs. And we would then have three months of data for them to look at. And they wouldn't be just looking at transportation, they'd be looking at other senior needs as well, and then coming back to us to make a recommendation. I know a lot of towns are now looking at rideshare as a option for senior transportation, possibly partnering with GATRA to do some handicap-accessible or maybe a private entity if that's what makes the most sense. There's grant money out there, there's foundation money out there, and we just haven't explored any of this. So I feel like we need more information, we need to do our due diligence to make an informed decision about what is the best transportation for the seniors in Plimpton.
I'd just like to say, I drive for the council on aging. We have a 2013 Toyota van that takes people that are mobile. You got to be able... For me to take somebody in a wheelchair, they have to be... I have to help them out of their wheelchair, let them get into the front seat of that van, then put the wheelchair in the back of the van. If somebody was not mobile and therefore could not get out of a wheelchair, I can't take them. And just for a piece of information, I went to Wingate, where I go outreach, I go and see people. One gentleman had to take one of the ambulances that they call, one of the vans, and out of his pocket, because Medicare doesn't cover it, was $225 to take him to a doctor, which is in Plymouth, 10-minute ride, and then $225 to bring him back. I went and did it through the council on aging to save the man the $450. But what I'm getting at is that we take people... We don't do grocery runs or anything like that. Everything is through doctor's appointments, dentists. I even pick up prescriptions for people. But with the idea of the wheelchair, I couldn't possibly take them if they cannot get out of their wheelchair and are mobile enough to get into the front seat of a van. So I just wanted to add that. And I hope we go through getting a wheelchair-accessible van.
Any other questions, comments on Article 33? Hearing none. Because this is capital stabilization, this requires a two-thirds vote?
Can you clarify if we're voting in favor or against?
Yeah, we had a second, someone. Yeah, Nancy Butler. We're just questioning the second. We did have a second, so. So we are going to... The motion on the table that was read is to authorize the purchase of this van equipment, this van, for $12,000. That's what's on the table. So all those who are in favor of such motion as it was read, please raise your hand. Downhands, those opposed? That is too close to call. I'm going to have to have a standing vote. If the tellers could please come to the front?
It's a two-thirds vote. It wasn't close to two-thirds.
I wasn't sure. I'm not good with math. Okay. Good point that was made by Town Council here, that $12,000 is the first payment of the van. It does not say what that total cost is going to be. So you are voting on the first payment only of this van. So all those in favor of Article 33, please stand and please remain standing until I Thank you. Please be seated. That's 28. Those opposed? Please stand and remain standing until I ask you to take your seat. So that's 39. No, you can please be seated. So the motion fails. So it was 28 in favor, 39 opposed. Okay, before we go to our last article, I just would like to call attention to the folks that helped make this meeting possible. Our select board, our finance committee worked countless hours in putting this warrant together for you folks, plus others in the room, obviously. So please give a hand to those folks who gave up a lot of their time. Someone like to move it as printed, I hope? Any discussion on Article 34? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll see you at the polls. Have a good night.